Right, we can move then into confidential session at the end of the hearing. So there should be an oath and affirmation over there. But maybe before we get into that, can you please state your full names and designations at Shoprite?
Peter Fensal, General Manager Procurement at Shoprite.
All right. Mr. Fensal, will you be the only one that will be giving evidence?
Yes.
Mr. Lango, I believe you're part of the legal team, is that right? Okay, perfect. Mr. Fensal, that laminated page in front of you that contains an oath or affirmation. If you'd kindly indicate whether you have any objections in taking an oath, and if not, would you kindly just read from the sheet, please, into the record?
I swear that the evidence I shall give shall be the truth, all truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
All right, great, thank you. So I'm going to cover a number of themes during the session today. I think we'll start with the sort of move away from the wholesale supply model towards an integrated supply chain. But before we get into that, maybe, you know, if you could just explain to us where and how the Freshmark entity fits into the rest of the Shoprite group? And maybe just tell us a little bit more about your operations as well.
Okay, there you go. Freshmark is the Shoprite Group's food and vegetable procurement buying distribution arm. We've got six distribution centers in South Africa. The only retailer with distribution centers in Polokwane and Bloemfontein. We buy and procure from about 430 growers in South Africa every day of the year.
All right. Okay, so we're aware that Shoprite is also operational in Africa. Does Shoprite export fresh produce through its Freshmark operations?
Yes, we do. To the nine African countries we operate in. We do export from South Africa, yes.
Okay. And, sorry, through which of the six DCs do you supply out of?
Our KwaZulu-Natal facility into Swaziland, our Bloemfontein facility into Lesotho, our Cape Town facility for Namibia, Angola, Ghana, and our Gauteng facility for Zambia, Malawi.
Okay. All right, so, I mean, maybe just as an hypothesis, the initial concerns from an inquiry perspective is that the growing trend towards direct contracting will result in a further erosion of the NFPM income base and cause an eventual collapse of the NFPMs. What are Shoprite's views on this hypothesis?
Derek, in my mind, most of former retailers in South Africa, barring one of our competitors, aren't really buying on the market at all directly. We have a very small percentage and have had less than 1% of our purchase on municipal markets for quite some time, for the better part of the past decade. I don't think that retailers haven't been buying on the municipal market barring one bigger plan than those that do have franchise models where it's not their corporate stores that probably supporting. I think the markets in general, if I look at this statistics, they had over a 20% turnover growth the past calendar year in 2023, so that's quite healthy, so, yeah.
Yeah. And maybe just explain, sort of, I know you've been with Shoprite for many years in this respect, but talk us through your experience over the years and the shift towards this integrated supply model and maybe some of the benefits that you've seen that substantiate or underlie that shift.
So our journey on direct buying and procurement from growers started just after deregulation in 97, the first retailer in South Africa to go directly to growers. At the time, for us, the crux was one, reduce cost in the chain because the markets work on quite hefty commission structure. Two was to shorten the supply chain, get products straight into our facilities. In a lot of cases, especially in short shelf life product, our farmers harvest them back today and tonight, we start delivering into our stores. A lot of our stores are night deliveries, we operate 23 hours a day, seven days a week. So that, let's call it reduce cost and reduce time in the supply chain is quite critical for us. And then there's a long list of other reasons why direct contracting, but probably the most important for us.
So in your view, are NFPMs unsuitable to your supply model?
Yes, so the crux is that I cannot not know where my product is going to come from. Got a fairly simple, let's call it, job to do in the business. That's to ensure that every single day we have the right quality safe produce on shelves, that we buy at fair value and sell at a competitive price. If I just look at that mandate the business has on us, there's no way I can go to a market, and I'm not going to talk class and food safety because that has been covered quite substantially, but for the rest of it, I don't think it's understood well. So I cannot not know where my product coming from. So every day you go to a market, the product can be there and can't, or there's no product on shelf. The quality or the standard or the size of product you require is possibly there or not. Every day, price is discovered and the price is made on the market. We tend to have a marketing strategy on our product. We tend to want to know what we're going to be paying for, although not a long period, but we want to place that we can execute the right strategy, marketing strategy on the product. And those are the things that you can't when you go to municipal market. I'm not going to get the product necessarily, I'm not going to get the quality and the size that I want necessarily. I don't know what the price is the morning I go there, although there's history, but we've seen the last week prices on two of the KVI commodities, onions and tomatoes, jumped by 30% in three days. Yeah, so for that reason, it's not going to make sense for us to increase our purchase of percentage.
So would you say it's more of a security of supply sort of issue?
It's all about security of supply and there's a lot behind it, but for us, it is, I must know who's planting my product, when are they planting it? Is there sufficient volumes that they've bonded it? Because I can't afford not to have product on shelf.
So we've obviously heard a lot of submissions around the challenges at the NFPMs. So, I mean, I'm not sure if you're aware of those challenges, but are you saying that irrespective of those challenges, and if those were to improve, the model just simply doesn't fit into a supply chain such as Shoprite?
The NFPMs will have to change in any way. I don't think a lot of money has been invested there, so there's a lot of upgrading to be done. Everybody's got the right to save foods and there's a list of acts this long from a food safety point of view that everybody must comply with. So they're anyway going to have to invest and upgrade. To us, we cannot afford to add value into the chain. I cannot afford my product to spend an additional day in a chain. I cannot afford not to know what the cold chain is like on my product. We work with a mountain of product where we've got three-day shelf life. Food waste in a country, well, all over the world, but especially in our country where there's a lot of food, a lot of people that go to bed hungry at night is absolute sin. And it's also one of the Shoprite Group's sustainability drivers and goals to reduce food waste. So it just doesn't make sense for me to go buy.
Can you talk to us, you mentioned the cold chain, I mean, can you talk to us a little bit about your cold chain at Freshmark and how it's maintained and without sort of, you know, giving away too many state secrets, but...
No, operations is pretty straightforward, I think that happens more or less everywhere the same. So our emphasis starts on farm. Product needs to get from orchard or field into optimum temperatures as quick as possible. Every hour after harvest that you're out of the cold chain, you lose a day shelf life at the end, literally. So you need to have optimum temperature that starts with as quick as possible into refrigeration or cooling. Obviously, depending on a product, I'm not going to necessarily require it on a butter nut, but a lot of other product. Then it's optimum temperature handling and storage on farm. It's optimum delivery temperature into our facilities. And our facilities then are geared for high humidity product categories, low humidity categories, running cold protecting product that are temperature sensitive and the other way around, and loading into stores in refrigerator trucks, receiving in refrigerator, receiving by some shelf. Got a long list of product that must get from truck to shelf in under 10 minutes. It's that crucial in the business. Now, Checkers brand, we now have cold chain champions that drives the cold chain. So a lot of investment from the business and a lot of emphasis on maintaining the cold chain. As I go back to the statement, that every hour you're out of your optimum temperature, you lose a day shelf life. At the end, and that shelf life's not necessarily with me, it might be at home once the consumer has purchased the product.
So it's all geared towards extending that shelf life and reducing waste, I suppose?
That's 100% correct.
And I mean, how does that differ sort of at the NFPMs?
For one, you're not going to know what temperature that product was delivered at. Was it refrigerated, not refrigerated? Two, facilities might work and might not work as far as their backup fridges is concerned. Three is, once product goes onto the floor, you know all, I'm sure you visit some of the NFPMs, you know all that's not refrigerated and optimum for that product. And then, once you've purchased, you have to now go pick up your product and the cold chain, you only have control from there on. See, virtually no control from a buyer's point of view. I don't know what the agents do and what the markets do, but as I see it, there's, my perspective, not a lot of control there, that I'm going to have.
I mean, I don't think it's disputed that Shoprite is the biggest retailer in South Africa. So just in terms of volumes, I mean, would you be able to secure the volumes on the NFPMs on a sustainable basis? Or is it something that you can only really secure through, you know, upfront agreements and...
Sure you know how the markets work, you can't secure volume upfront. On the day, the early bird catch the worm, so if you're on the market at four o'clock, you're probably going to get some products you want. If you're there at eight o'clock, you're not necessarily going to get as, you know, going to get your product. So there's no security of supply if I have to go to a private market.
Correct.
And even worse when it's highly perishable product.
Okay, so I think we've sort of covered the pros and cons of that integrated supply model versus the wholesale retail, sorry, wholesale procurement model at the NFPMs. But maybe just moving on to the business itself, who does shop Freshmark, Shoprite, regardless of its direct competitors in the fresh produce space?
So we have three banners, I don't think it's a state secret, the Checkers Checkers Hyper, which are aimed at the more affluent upmarket consumer, LSM 7 to 10, so that would be a Woolworths or Pick 'n Pay probably, most likely, maybe some corporate spa stores. We've got Shoprite that covers our middle income bracket in South Africa. And there we would possibly, well, we would look at, again, some of the Pick 'n Pay, some of the spa stores, the food lovers markets of the world. Then we have Usafe, it's our entry-level retail stores that really looks after the needs of the most vulnerable in South Africa. And possibly Aker Trade, Independence, Boxer would be our position there.
Okay, great. Just in terms of the NFPMs themselves now, would Shoprite consider purchasing from a privately owned NFPM? If there was something that would spring up geared specifically towards the retail model? Or is it still something that is beyond...
If there's cost going to be added to the chain, why would I not share the advantage of reduced cost between ourselves and the supplier? Why would I add cost if I've got a distribution center in every of the big centers, in every one of the big centers? So that is sort of against our mandate. There's no way, we can't be the low-price leader in South Africa and the value to the people in South Africa if I'm adding cost in a structure. That's not necessarily if I can deal directly.
And when you say adding cost, are you talking specifically now about those commissions?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A 12 and a half percent...
Yeah, so it's partly that, plus I will now have to go pick up product at my own cost and then drive it back to our facility as well, so it doesn't make sense.
Okay, great. So you mentioned you do buy sort of 1% of your produce on...
Less than 1%.
Less than 1%, yeah. Just explain that 1%. Is that sort of where you've got shortages, let's say there was issues around supply or whatever the case might be? Or is there specific products that you...
It is most likely, so it's twofold. So one would be where we've got insufficient supply, but it's also then limited to product that's not packaged in our private label packaging. As a large percentage, by far the largest percentage of product are packed in some shape or form. So anyway, limited by what I can go buy on the market, even if there's a requirement, one. Two, we would want to choose a product that's less of a risk from food safety and a consumer risk in buying a product that we don't necessarily know the history of. And then there's, yeah, there's a couple of product categories where we really want very specific sizing of product that's a small percentage of a farmer's crop, where we at times are forced to go buy on the market, like a watermelon or a pumpkin. Which, I mean, those two categories of that less than a percent are of the product that we buy on the market.
Okay, well, look, I'll come back to this later in terms of gap certifications and things like that. But in these instances where you are buying from the NFPMs and those specific products you just mentioned now, how does Shoprite account then for the issues around traceability and the quality standards and gap certifications?
So quality standards will be there because it's still going to go through our, let's call it, quality control system at point of receiving. So we're still going to monitor quality, be it defects or leaks or whatever the quality requirement would be for a commercial grower. Two is, we steer away from product that is of high risk. A pumpkin you are going to cut and peel, the same on a watermelon. So the risk factor is much smaller should there be a risk.
And that quality checks that you're talking about now, are you doing that on the market floor before you're purchasing the product?
A buyer would be on the market, one, doing it, but it will still, at our point of receiving, at our distribution center, a full quality check will be done to make sure they comply.
Just in terms of price discovery, the price discovery process at the NFPMs, do you use that as a basis for contract negotiations with suppliers, specifically of fresh produce?
Okay, so, yeah, contracts are very harsh with, we don't contact growers. We do price negotiations with our growers week in advance. At that stage, on some commodities, you could have indication of what prices are doing currently, but you still don't have any sight of what's going to happen next week, as I said a bit earlier, how quickly things can change. Yeah, so our price discovery is more around what suppliers would think is a fair purchase price, volumes available. So it's the same supply and demand strategy that, or supply and demand price formation that you would have at purchase, we have at sell as well. Because if there's a lot of product from our growers available and we want to sell it, we have to adapt our marketing strategy, put in our promotion, whatever the case is, and move the volume through. Obviously, going to be a lower purchase price. If there's very little product available, we are going to sell it more expensively and then obviously going to buy it more expensively as well. But, yeah, I don't think the market in our sphere is a consideration, but definitely not the basis of price formation.
Maybe just putting that aside, would you say as a general proposition that the price discovery process at the NFPMs are reliable value, or reliable indicators of value pricing or not? Do you trust the price...
If there's a willing customer and a willing seller, yes, definitely. I trust the price because it's fresh produce, product is dying. So you, on the day, the right price will sell the product. If there's very few product, it's going to be expensive. And if there's a lot of product, you're going to have to make a price so that you can sell it from a market point of view. I think price discovery is brilliant, especially on large commodities like potatoes and onions and tomatoes, where formal retail sells a very small percentage of that product and the bulk is sold by independents and informal traders.
So there is trust in that system?
Right. We buy less than 1% on the market. What I know of 26 years is, that's the only way you're going to discover a price. And we discover the price the same way with our growers, as I explained a bit earlier.
Okay, so I think I'm going to move off that topic now and move on to SME and HDP procurement within the Shoprite group. So you mentioned you've got around 400 growers that are supplying you?
Yeah, just, yeah, over 400 growers in South Africa.
What proportion of those growers are, or at least what proportion of the fresh produce procured by the Shoprite group is sourced from SME/HTP growers?
It's about 20% of our grower number is SME.
Is it?
Growers, yes.
And how would you classify an SME/HTP grower in that sense?
It's growers that do less than a million rand turnover in our life.
Okay, so 20% from, coming from less than...
Yeah, that's why we have 430 growers, one. Two is our Polokwane and Bloemfontein facilities give us opportunity to procure in those regions where suppliers wouldn't necessarily have the ability. What's alternative, they would have to truck product to one of the major municipal markets, which they don't necessarily have the ability because of scale or volume. And now we have a distribution center in that area with our focus buying in those areas.
You mentioned that you're the only retailer that has those outlying DCs. Was this a consideration when you, in the strategy behind that?
So for us, it was just, again, it comes back to putting affordable food on the plate. We didn't see sense that growers would truck product to the major centers and then we have to put it on a truck and deliver it 2,000 kilometers driving past the grower back into the region. So our priority is local procurement in the sense that in and around, one. And the cost, the cost of transport is a tremendous part of the cost chain. If we cut that out, we can, again, strive to have affordable food on shelf.
What is the radius that those DCs, as in Polokwane, are servicing? Are they servicing those outline areas there or...
Yeah, so Polokwane would come down to, you see, they'll go to Messina, they'll go to Botswana border, probably the Kruger National Parks border, and come down to Mordemoli, I would think. Yeah, so, yeah, the area around it.
Okay. You mentioned transport's obviously a big issue, but what are the other challenges that Shoprite faces in procuring from the specific class of grower? SME/HTP specifically?
The challenge will always be continuous supply and scale. Scale is not necessarily issue because our various distribution centers handle, depend on the stores they serve, service less and more volume and can accommodate bigger or smaller volumes. But it's a continuity of supply. I don't mind buying a ton of product from anybody, as long as I know I'm going to get that done consistently. Because we've built our supply puzzle in advance, again, towards the security of supply. I need that surety. So I would probably think it's the biggest challenge for a grower today is continuous supply. And that doesn't even speak to necessarily the ability to assist climate change and nature and, and then. It's quite a big issue. That to me would be the biggest challenge.
Okay. Are you buying from individual growers, we're talking about these smaller ones and all? Or they're operating in co-ops?
And the co-op model, both, yeah.
And how are you finding the co-op arrangement? Does that secure some supply for them at least?
So at the help of continuity of supply, definitely. Gives a bit of scale. But if you've got 20 growers each planting in various slots, planting a specific product, then you're a commercial grower, although you've got smaller co-ops delivering. One, two, a lot of time, the input from a mechanical point of view, let's say tractor planting, that costs a shed between small growers. You only have to have one packing facility, so the physical capital cost associated is in one central place. You have one central place that has to control food safety and documentation and all of that instead of duplicating that 10 or 15 or 20 times. I've always been keen on the market, personally been keen on the market.
And I mean, as a buyer, do you encourage them to sort of operate within the co-op space?
Definitely, we actively do that, yes.
Yeah. And talk us through that process. I mean, do you have buyers that go out and see them, maybe assist them in sort of...
We've got a, by far, the largest number of buyers just because of distribution centers and the way we do business. So in each of our facilities, we'll have a group of buyers looking after the buying procurement in that specific area. But also in that group of buyers, they have fruit or specific vegetable types, so it's not a general buyer. There would be, there will be product specialists that understands from horticultural side. That understands the farming part of it, but also understands our business and what the consumer prefers. So they are on farms, actual package mandated, the minimum number of times growers while buyers must get out to grow. So they are on farms, well, for one, just to go see if the farmer planted or they're asking to plant. But to go look at packing facilities, evaluate growers, evaluate fields with the growers, give advice, if they have advice to give, and discuss our business in general, where the trends and demands are going and where we're going to go in future with it.
So you have like growing programs at them and that type of thing?
Yeah, so we have growing program, planting programs, we do seasonal programs, winter and summer program, gives us a bit more flexibility than doing annual program. Those are quite live because you might find that a grower is devastated by oil or as example, and you need to adjust within a cycle programs to some of your other growers. But, yeah, it's our roadmap, almost want to say to success, but it's our roadmap to where we're going to get the product, who's planting it, to what areas. And if I have devastation, let's take the floods last year in the Western Cape, we had twice. I knew where to get product from other regions because for a week or two, we just had growers running around trying to recover fields and farms. And I know which farmers around the country had the product that we could go press on their button for supply.
Okay. So you mentioned that you guys don't enter into contracts, you don't seem to like the idea of the contract, but maybe...
Contracts are very lawyer-type formal word. No, so we don't do any contracts, we have planting programs, which... We have planting programs, which is indication for the grower to plant. And for us, well, indication for him to plant and for him, indication of the demand we're going to take. We don't, we don't, how do you put it? We, if a supplier can't supply his program for whatever reason, I'm not financially penalizing him. If its climate or risk was something that was not in his control, we'll give him a fair chance for season or two or three. But at a stage, we're going to say this farm gets for argument's sake oil every year in this period. We should not be programming this supplier and go to one of the other sixty microclimates and find the product or somewhere else. So contractually, there is no contract that says I'm going to take a hundred after twenty-five or twenty-six years of doing it twice a year. We have a fairly good understanding of what our demand is going to be. If prices maintain or is at a level where we see, if there's no COVID or something funny that disrupts the demand, we have a fair indication. I would, and I, we would probably aim to do eighty, ninety percent accurate this way, less or more.
So it's that flexibility that is the real reason behind your, or the real reason behind not entering into these formal agreements? Is that, you know, growing for farming at least is a lot of?
I don't know if I'm going to sell a hundred thousand cabbage heads the third week in September. I'm probably going to aim to do it for argument's sake because history told us in that window, in that period, should everything be equal, we can do it. But should the price be thirty rand, I know I'm going to sell fifty thousand. And should the price be ten rand, I know I'm going to need two hundred thousand for that reason. And the other way around, if I had to start embalishing growers because they couldn't deliver for everything that is not in their control, there won't be a lot of growers left in South Africa.
So it's just that inherent unpredictability of farming?
Of agriculture, yeah.
Agriculture, yeah.
And it's more difficult today because of climate change than it was twenty years back.
So maybe just expand on that. I mean, that is something that we are looking at is the impact of climate change and the effects it's having on farmers. And we've seen, you know, the number of farmers twindle or at least, well, at least decreased significantly over the years. Is that as a result of climate change or just?
It's, but only reason, that's a different topic. The weather is becoming less predictable. We've got growers that in twenty-three received more oil than three generations ago, received more water. We have frost later, frost earlier. The biggest impact, one is people just stopped selling some specific product. And the other is that people, expensive ways to mitigate, be it structures or nets itself makes produce more expensive because suddenly you're going to add, depends on which product, three hundred, two hundred, in cap. Which, which, we're seeing that trying to mitigate whatever.
Yeah. And you've obviously seen that cost, you know, grow over time now as well?
Yes, but it's nice to have nets when product is big. When there's hours supply in the market, then you're in a bit of trouble, I would think.
Okay. Just in terms of trading terms, what are the trading terms applicable to these supply agreements in terms of repayment terms, rebates? And I understand this might be confidential.
They are now that we go on discussion.
Okay. All right, Chair Three, can we maybe just note that? And I think we will have a confidential session at the end.
That's okay, that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was in our submissions as well, but we can gladly discuss it.
All right. So just in terms of exclusivity, you don't require an exclusivity from growers to supply or to supply a certain percentage of its products to ShopRite?
And no exclusivity whatsoever from growers.
So are you aware of whether your suppliers are supplying any other of your competitors and?
Yeah, yeah, I know. And I would like it if they do because that would give them economies of scale. And generally, it's to our advantage if the supplier does, retailers as well.
So would you say there's a lot of competition for products with, between the retailers? I mean, to secure products or?
There's a lot of competition for the right quality product every day.
So when you say?
And that's where the, our operators in. We want as perfect as product from a cosmetic point of view. And there's only that much in a crop yield. So the upmarket, the retailers will, it's like fighting for that. Also, there is a lot of competition, especially in certain, in certain product categories.
So maybe, I mean, we all sort of lay people in the suspect, but I mean, do you have particular suppliers that have a better quality product? Or is it always, if you've got a crop that is harvested, there's always going to be maybe ten percent of the sort of the best of the best?
Percent perfect product, we work with nature. There's going to be thirty or fifty percent good product, some fair product and then the product that you can't sell.
And that's generally just across the board with your suppliers, huh?
Just across the board suppliers, yeah.
And do you compete with each other on price for that top ten percent or top twenty percent that you're talking about now? I mean?
I would think so.
So would a grower, I mean, would he be?
No, he won't bother, no, no.
Won't you bother?
No, he won't bother, no, we don't bother. We don't have, yeah, we don't have one grower for a specific product.
Okay.
Size just doesn't allow it. Our requirement in a distribution center is a minimum of three growers, even the smallest, a minimum on the silliest line possible, that we probably only sell one of is a minimum of three growers. But then it depends on your, your risk associated with growing that product, how many growers we're going to have on this product category. There's some categories where one distribution center will have eighteen growers spread across the province, but in other growing areas as well, just to transcreate the product.
Okay. So you say you don't bother. I mean, is that price then just determined on what is being supplied at that particular moment versus what the demand is or?
Supply and demand fifty-two weeks of the year.
Okay, so how is price determined? And often is it negotiated with the growers?
So we negotiate price weekly with growers. The price might not change every week, but we're going to have the talk and discussion of why it's going to stay the same. So we will not, not discuss the product price. And it's all supply and demand, what volume pressure the supplier has that he needs to market and what we need, so.
Okay. So, I mean, how does that process work? I mean, do you discuss input costs at that particular time? Or is it really just, as you say, supply and demand?
How much product he has and, or how little he has will determine the price. And here is, because if you've got five suppliers, you're going to need to get those five suppliers to a price. Some people are going to be unhappy and others are going to be happy, but next week it's probably the other way around. Your aim is going to be to pay, to negotiate growers to more or less the same price in any way, so.
And maybe just in general terms, I mean, is that price that you're paying for that specific product, is that higher than perhaps what you would have? Would you buy it at the NFPMs for if you had to? Even with the additional costs of the commissions and all of those things?
It's definitely higher. If I look at the average price, the NFPMs in twenty-three was like four rand a kilo for their total. And so, yeah, so there's a long list of it. But in general, I don't see how anybody can be paying the same price for product packed in private label with a long list of demands that we covered earlier for products. So regardless, probably more than the market anyway.
And is that only for your, sort of, your premium stores? Or do you?
No, so what the three brands allow us to do is buy a much larger percentage of growers' crop. So I want some of the premium product. I want product that is maybe a bit more blemish from an external point of view, let's say. A wind mark may be a bit misformed. For certain of our markets, it's obviously then a more affordable price point. And then I've got product where I don't necessarily demand everything to be perfectly uniform and in size. Maybe it's a size category. Certainly have to go look for a additional, for his other products. Helps us with food waste on farms because suddenly we have access to some other products.
Okay, so, I mean?
It's me swiveling around.
No worries, I've been doing the same. But so, you can't really look at it in isolation then. So you obviously, you know, your premium products, you're going to charge at a premium, obviously, because of all the specs that you require. And you'll pay that farmer more for that particular premium product because there's a lot of competition for it. But as you sort of move through, you know, down the gears, so to speak, the price will become a little bit more competitive and?
It's always competitive.
Okay, sorry.
The price will be more affordable for that market segment.
So if you look at it as a sort of basket of goods that ShopRite is purchasing across its brands and across its LSM levels, you'll get an average price which is maybe a little bit closer to the NFPM price?
That average price is still three times higher than the NFPM price. Over a year, total basket of categories, maybe a bit unfair because I sell herbs and some other products. We don't necessarily sell on the market or berries that aren't that big on the market, but just as a point of reference.
And those costs, is it the packaging, the delivery to your DCs? I'm just trying to understand why.
It's all change. So for one, the farmer has to put control systems and disciplines in place to ensure that there's a culture. I'm not talking food safety because none of us can get away. It's a given. We regulate it in acts and regulations from a food safety point of view. So regardless, there has to be food safety. And that's a cost for everybody, small, small and big. So I'm just saying, the cost of a culture and the cost of delivering product at the right temperature to our facilities, the cost of, or the value added, call it in the cost, because it's now in my packaging in smaller quantities. I have growers packing our own returnable containers just enough so that the stores receive a delivery every day because we deliver to stores every day, get enough to sell on the day. So I don't necessarily, as example, put a bulk containment that you would see on the market on the shelf. So there's some added cost in the fact that they're not transporting bulk volume necessarily. And then I want a very specific size for very specific packaging. So as an example, a tomato that is loose on shelf will be a larger size tomato. A tomato that's in a bucket would be a medium sized tomato and a bag would be a smaller sized tomato. So it's very difficult to look at the market price and say, tomatoes are twenty rand on the market. Because there's various sizes I buy, there's various grades of tomatoes on the market. And you receive high to low prices and those be double and more on the municipal market. So an average price doesn't cut it on you. For one, must go look at the specific size and the specific quality, which let's say there is. And then you'll probably see a closer relationship to retail prices and what's in the market in the general. And tomatoes don't cost twelve rand on the market. There's tomatoes that cost two rand, there's tomatoes that cost twenty-two rand, depending on what is available. If it's hard, we have a heat wave. I want a very specific color in tomato. The heat wave is going to cause more ripe and red tomatoes. I don't want those. I want a specific quality or specific color of the size of product I want. So that's going to come at a premium because it's going to be the least quantity available out there. So it frustrates me when people say the market price and the retail price. There is no such thing as a market price. Tell me you are looking at medium plus tomatoes that are champagne color and it's class one? And what's that specific price on the municipal market?
Okay. So if I understand you, I mean, you're saying that you can't use the wholesale price of the NFPMs as a proxy for a landed price at your DC, for instance?
No.
You can't equate it to? Okay. Maybe just rounding out this, the agreements negotiation. Do you have a different negotiation process? Or does the negotiation process differ when dealing with large commercial farmers versus your small scale farmers?
Exactly the same.
Exactly the same, huh? Yeah. All right. So moving on to certifications, GAP certification is in particular. Can you maybe tell us the difference between global GAP versus, say, local GAP? And the reason behind these certifications? Maybe just speak in general terms about these certifications?
Didn't I just say we're not going to talk food safety? Now, okay, so local GAP, what is today local GAP? We actually, it's our, it's actually the ShopRite Group's food safety system that are now used probably all over the world. So we saw the need years back to have an entry level GAP. So I don't like the word local GAP, so let's call it an entry level because that's to small and big growers that aren't used to a food safety system. I'm regulated to what controls I must have over food safety as a, as somebody in the supply chain. So there's a minimum requirement from a food safety point of view that I would require, just have to, anyway. So what entry level GAP does, two biggest risk factor on produce is hygiene and hygiene, not only personal hygiene, but obviously facility hygiene and use of chemicals. So that's the two things that are probably could end up causing harm to a consumer or anybody consuming that product from that point on. So entry level GAP focuses on those two critical points as a minimum requirement. Once you go to then global GAP, you start looking at more controls around that. You start looking at social part of a farm, the environmental impact a farm has. So you're adding on, but that's not necessarily going to harm a consumer. It's, call it a nice to have responsible grower, be it socially, environmentally, all of your product. I hope that explains it.
Yeah, a hundred percent. So, I mean, you wouldn't say have, you know, a global GAP standard for your high LSM stores and a local GAP for your low LSM stores?
So growers generally would start with an entry level GAP. And as they grow and their food safety systems and disciplines evolve, the natural step will be to now start incorporating those other aspects to one day, one day ensure that they're responsible farmers in the way they produce products.
So you, you, you've, you've adopted this entry level gap, for instance, um. Um, so the rationale already behind that is that that covers the, the, the food security issues that, that are most concerned to you.
And to a, would be to a consumer.
And to the consumer.
Yeah, the issue that's going to kill somebody.
Yeah.
That's literally what it is. So um, the use of chemicals and withholding periods and it's going to make somebody sick and.
Yeah.
If you, yeah.
Okay. All right, um. Would you maybe agree that, that implementing an extremely high threshold for, um, for supply? Um, such as, you know, this intermediate or this entry level gap or a higher global gap standard? Uh, creates a barrier, barrier to entry for, for S M E H T P growers? Or is it just, is it just?
I, I would say that nobody has a choice, regardless if it's a barrier or not. If you are regulated as a producer in food safety standards and, and that's regulation. So none, nobody can escape it. S M E to a commercial grower can escape it, can escape it. If we were policing, if. If the country was policing all the acts and regulations, um, based on that, then everybody had to do it in any way. Um, that is difficult for sure. It's not easy and, and. Yeah, so it, it's not difficult. It's about, um. Probably about fifty percent is you're doing what you're doing and that's the right thing.
Yeah.
Um, according to X, Y and Z, and the other fifty percent is um documenting that you are doing the right thing. Uh, if it's something that needs to happen daily, all in one, so that, but that you documenting, they're actually checking that is happening. Um, I don't think I've, to me, the, the barrier is probably the cost. Um, and for that, to, to the group for, for many years, um, our um. S M E growers that start into our business, um, up to a, a certain threshold turnover, we, we pay for the certification. So we get the auditor out to them and have them certified, uh, because it's not cheap, even entry level gap. Uh, it's going to cost you, um, and then I'm not even talking about.
I mean, what, what you're talking about now, I mean, how, how would you structure that with, with your smaller growers? That, is it a funding model?
Once we, we, we literally um contract a auditing firm to go um audit them. Um, so they have, and, and we, that's partly, and we help them with the. Because part of that audit is your chemical and your analysis of your product. So you must all send product away. We'll have analysis, be it micro wheel counts or chemical counts. Um, so, and we handle that on, so we'll have their product tested and the results will go to them so they've got it as part of their.
So you did mention sort of that, that, that this is a regulatory issue, um, but. My understanding at least is, is these, these gap certifications is over and above. With a high threshold in obviously your Procon, for instance, which would have Procon regulations and, and.
Yeah, but, but Procon will do food safety. So food safety is hygiene, ah, will do hygiene. Procon isn't going to demand that you give, that you have a chemical analysis and, and that. That you're using the right chemical on the right product, the right withholding period. That's not part of the Procon. Certification. It's that your place is nice and clean and neat. You have some systems and disciplines in place for that.
Okay, so I mean, ob- obviously the, the Procon standard just, just wouldn't meet muster with, with a retailer. There's just too much risk.
Procon as a, um, a signee for, um, all right, is checking class in our life. They're making sure that we conform with the acts as far as the, uh, if we say the product is class one in packaging, they'll police that. Um, and um, that packaging, packaging. Label legislation for argument's sake is met, um, as far as the rules and guidelines are. They spend a thousand five hundred plus hours a month in. On average, in our, between our stores and our distribution centers, so we have been in our life.
Yeah. If, if I understood you correctly just now, you, you said that you do provide assistance to S M E H T P growers in obtaining this. The, the entry level gap.
Yeah.
Um, maybe just to clarify, just on what terms, you did mention around the auditors, but. The, the cost of actually acquiring the, the certification and maintaining it, what, what are the terms that, that you would um grant that assistance on?
So we have a quality assurance team that will advise, help and guide. But the physical auditor comes out inspection on the day.
You pay for that.
We pay for it, but we also don't have people on the farm on, holding hands on the day. You are going to get audited to your, let's call it, your food safety.
So what, what is the actual, is, is that the, the, the essence of the costs of obtaining this? Is that audit? Or is it the essence of the, the cost of obtaining the certification?
Mm-hmm.
Is it the audits?
It's a physical inspector has to travel, so there's a travel cost, a overnight cost and a physical inspection cost.
And you, and you don't pay a, a levy every year of like a license that you've got to apply for? So it's just that which you just.
So you get, depends on which product you have, um. Your certification is only valid for a period between six and twelve months. Some might be eighteen months. Depends on the product and the risk and what level you are. You need to be certified every year because um that certification lapses between sixteen and nineteen months. Um, and then you need to make sure, yeah, as things change on farms and whatever.
Maybe just to, to round out now on, on this specific theme, um. Just in general terms, what, what can be done to uplift this specific grower class to allow them? To increase their participation in the retail, uh, fresh produce market?
We've already discussed pulling resources and, and co-op in. Um, to me, there's, there's a lot of growers that can grow product. Uh, you will need a bit of scale um to ensure a bit more continuous supply and that can only be done. My opinion, that can only be done by grouping together. Um, in a pool, if you want to call it that.
And, and, and rural hubs? I mean, is this something that you would consider? I know Spa's got a, a rural hub. We actually visited it in, in just outside Zine. Are you aware of that, that particular model? Is that something that you would consider as a? Um, as a way to increase participation as part of your supply development programs?
As it is, we have the largest participation um between retail. We are quite successful because we done, we have smaller facilities and are in the rural areas. I don't think we um have considered or are considering. I know we're not considering rural hubs. Um, we are all encouraging growers to stand together um and work to the benefit of each other.
Okay, thank you. Um, just, just take us through servicing the rural areas. You did mention earlier about your D C in Polakwani and some of the outlying areas, but. Um, what is, what is Shoprite's presence in, in the rural areas? Is that, is that a focus of yours? You mentioned the different brands Shoprite use, say. Which, which, which brands cater for, for those specific regions?
Um, it's going to depend on the town and makeup of the population. That's a thousand two hundred food stores, um. They're everywhere.
Okay, yeah.
It's, it's going to make, it depends on the makeup of the, the consumer that's most frequently going to shop that store.
Okay, a- and your D Cs, um, I mean, maybe explain the rationale behind the locations of your D Cs. I'm sure there's a lot of science that goes into this.
In short, it's uh. Logistically, the best place to either receive and distribute from, from a cost point of view. Um, so it's, it's all about being in the right, the right place and probably the most central to your distribution network. Service, either being serviced or servicing that reach, the stores in that region.
Okay. Um, I, I, one of the, the sort of um requirements to supply Shoprite is, is delivering produce to, to the D Cs, is that right?
That's correct. It's correct, but we, we do offer back hauling. Um, because our, the Shoprite runs their unfried of um trucks by default, making them the largest transporter in South Africa, but um. They run to stores, so if the proximity um to stores makes sense, we'll do back hauling. We in some cases have supplies delivering to stores, uh, coordinating a delivery to store. At the same time, our truck is there, so some might just not make sense to go pick up product, but they deliver their product which are then picked up at our store back to our distribution center.
So, so, so the back hauling that you're talking about now, uh, it's literally, okay, well, our truck is going to be at. White River Shoprite today at between two and four. If they wanted to deliver.
Back hauling is not full service, that I can tell you. Um, it, it wasn't for farmers. Um, so when they go to a grower.
Yeah.
Anything can happen on route and on truck. Um, the, the farmer's going to have advanced notice of when the truck will be there. Um, some cases, they're probably going to have to work a bit later and. Some, they're going to have to be ready a bit earlier. It just depends on what happens on the route and it's not just the physical route. It's also they might be held up um at a previous store that, that the truck delivered to.
So you take your chances then?
Yeah, you're not going to take a chance. Um, you're just going to know that it's not going to be eight o'clock. It might be nine o'clock or it might be seven o'clock.
So, so there's no flexibility in the system? So if, if you've got a grower out, you know, I don't know, in Zine, for instance, there's a Shoprite in Zine. That, that, that specific grower cannot go and deliver produce directly to that Shoprite store. They won't, they won't receive it. There's no model to receive it. It has to go to the D C.
It has to go to a business center and, um, for one, um. Because that store might just want, want crate of tomatoes on the day because they're getting tomatoes tomorrow and the supplier has got. Forty crates available. Uh, two is, um, there's no quality control, so we don't employ. Quality at store level at point of receiving. All of that is at our distribution center to ensure a new product goes out. Um, to the whole network, uh, it doesn't make sense. It, as good as it sounds. We give every store every day what they need and they think they're going to sell.
Yeah.
Um, I can't deliver twenty crates of tomatoes because the growers had twenty crates of tomatoes and have it on shelf for four or five days. I would rather give them one crate a day, every day.
So when, when you're looking at efficiencies then, I mean, obviously there'd be inefficiencies in what I've just described now, where you've got. A grower can literally deliver produce, you know, ten kilometers from his farm gates to a specific store. But instead he's got to now deliver it to the D C in Polakwani.
Always going to have it picked up, yeah.
Would have it picked up, but there's a cost involved in that. Goes to the D C, checks in there and then comes back two hundred Ks on the same road. But does the Shoprite look at efficiency as a group? So efficiency in servicing all of its two thousand stores? Is it, is it simply impossible to, to look at it on a store by store basis and, and try and build efficiencies in that system specifically for these. Outlying rural areas that maybe we are.
The, the proximity by distribution centers covers most of that inefficiencies. Uh, the fact that we are in. Um, let's call it all the, the major centers, covers the bulk of it. Um, if a grower was going to deliver product, they will have to drive past my facility to a municipal market. And anyway, um, or you might have whoever buying from him on farm. Regardless, he's not going to, unless he sells on farm, he's going to deliver somewhere. Um, the product, so uh, that inefficiency is supportive.
Okay. Um, I don't know if this is going to be confidential as well, but I'd, I'd like to understand just the, the, the costs around the D C as well and um. Maybe we can, I don't know, Vanna, are you happy to discuss that in confidential, yeah?
Yes, please.
All right. Okay, um, Chair, I think that's me for now. I think we can maybe take questions um. On what we've discussed now and then we can move into confidential session afterwards. I think that would be best. Is there anything from you guys?
Okay, thank, thank you very much, Mr. Bowles. Um, Mr. Mara, do you have any, anything to ask?
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions and again, I'm mindful that we're going to be entering into a confidential session. So the purpose of these questions, I mean, please answer them uh sort of in general if you can. If you can't, then, then just indicate. But I'm, the first topic I'm interested in is just to understand the sort of trend. When it comes to the prices that Freshmark pays to farmers. And again, very general trend here, um, you know. Particularly in, in your experience, Mr. Fonseca, has the prices sort of always been on the increase or has there been fluctuations? What is your observations when it comes to trends in terms of the prices that, that Freshmark pays to its farmers?
I think the general trend is upwards, but in my opinion, more so because of um the irregular, irregularity in climate which influences supply. Um, twenty two was a, we, our total basket, we were in deflation at. Twenty two and last year we were in the, I think the municipal market inflation was thirty percent. Our inflation was about twenty percent last. So it literally depends on, you know, it, it's much more um. Uh, volatile if you look at it on a weekly basis, but if you, if you look at our, let's call it in a calendar year. Um, you can get to a situation like two years apart where you're in deflation for a year. And you, as high as twenty percent inflated, which is the highest inflation um I've seen in my twenty years in the seat. Um, most it would be, I would say somewhere between one and ten percent, depends on the year and. Other climate, it, it's literally about the extremes um in general. Of course, supply and demand determines that price.
Right, and, and those sort of trends, i- is that something that follows through to the rest of the supply chain? So, you know, there's these trends from between farmer and D C, what happens sort of between D C and retail store? Is it a duplication of that trend or is it completely, completely separate?
No, it, it's probably completely separate, although the one is not um individual from the other. Um, it, the same challenges a grower will have or anybody will have on input costs would be the same challenges that the group has. Uh, so that's going to have a factor. Um, and then uh, it could be a, around affordability. Um, the other way around, where we don't follow the trend, but we are sacrificing because we. Have to feed the nation.
Yeah, so, so maybe on that, I mean, i- is that something, is there a general rule that says, look, I mean, we pass on, we pass on cost? If my costs are increasing because the farmers' costs are increasing, I'm going to pass that on to the consumer.
It's not as simple as that, so. In a U S A, if you're going to find forty articles selling in a U S A store, you're going to find four hundred fifty free reach articles in the checker store. Each of those, those product categories, um, we look individually at um supplying them on. And pricing around that and then supply and demand as far as our selling strategy. So every week when we negotiate price of our grows, also on all our articles, we, we set our marketing strategy. Um, for that category and there, there's a hundred reasons for which strategy you are going to follow and um. Some of that I, I probably won't, uh, can't discuss in an open forum. Um, so there's not a point blank, I'm paying ten percent more, just take a fancy computer program and add ten percent to the sale price. Definitely not.
Do, do you look at your, so in your weekly considerations of those prices, do you look at your competitor pricing?
Yes, for sure.
Yeah, all right. Something, I mean, on, on a related topic, I guess, is, is sort of if you're saying there's sort of an increasing trend. Uh, in, in terms of the, the prices that you pay to, to farmers. I mean, you've mentioned climate change or there are other considerations that have a big impact on, on farmers that are contributing to increasing their costs?
Um, yes, in the last two years, farmers, the last, it's now two years, in the last two years, farmers have. Grown the most expensive crop in history just from a, for one um. Fertilizer cost, chemical cost, uh, chemical, uh, chemical application, um. Generating of power, investing in alternative sources of power, um, minimum wage, you can name it. They've probably had to win uh from um, towards them, from an input cost point of view. Uh, it's not easy, but it's, it's not easy for any business to learn. So from a cost pressure point of. So from a cost pressure point of view.
Right, and sort of similarities for, and I mean, when you sell alternative energy, we are talking about load shedding and that they have to then, you know, invest in generators or solar energy. I mean, what's the impact like on Shoprite, particularly on, from a Freshmark perspective?
Well, the CEO is on the record for saying we spend, well, more than a billion our previous financially and we're probably adding to a billion in generators in our stores and in our distribution centers, so.
And what happens to that cost? I mean, is that just sort of part of the entire business cost? Is that sort of a perspective on Freshmark, is that you have a lot of refrigeration?
It's part of the business cost.
I see.
You give, yeah. Can't necessarily pass cost on point blank across, I explained previously how.
And sort of Freshmark doesn't stand separate from that? I mean, you have sort of the biggest refrigerators here, so.
We have the biggest refrigeration. Every phase of, of load shedding, I know what it's costing the business, so you cry.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
All right, and then my last question is, it's an hypothesis that we've been testing with the other retailers as well and, you know, these are things that we hear, these are things that we, we want your response on from, from your perspective. And it's the hypothesis that with this integrated supply model, there's a lot of bargaining power being transferred to retailers. That Freshmark is one of the largest buyers, if not the largest buyer when it comes to individual commercial growers. And that, you know, hypothetically provides Freshmark or then Shoprite with a lot of bargaining power. And I guess then the concern is then that we might be heading towards a situation that we currently see in Europe where the farmers have very little to no bargaining power. They're going on things like production strikes just to try and have some, some form of countervailing power against the retailers. I mean, in your experience, I mean, what is the South African position like? I mean, you deal with farmers, you deal with big farmers. What is your experience like when bargaining with these farmers?
So maybe just one back, the strikes in Europe is because subsidies that those farmers are dwindling, whichever way it is, and then they don't want product from other countries coming into their country. It could probably be quite bad for our export anyway. So formal retail, and like statistics, stats around the production of produce in South Africa. Fruit is a bit easier because it's majority are export driven and you have producer organizations like Oatca and Saty and Subtop. You've had discussions of some of them. It's a bit easier to have stats around what is being produced, what's exported, what's local and what gets processed. Vegetables are more difficult, there's one or two grower organizations that might have some insight. But formal retail, if I look at the calculations, the stats available out there in my mind doesn't equate for more than fifteen percent of what is being produced in South Africa. There is packaging, which is not necessarily of the crop. I can't have only one grower. In any way, can't have one grower, so for the product, to me, prices are discovered or mandated, it's a case of power than what a retailer probably has, depends on how makes his product. If there's a lot of product, a grower obviously has to look at reducing price so that the product can be put on promotion or by chain and people necessarily can afford that product and then buy that product. Yeah, it's, it's gonna be a long, a long, yeah. It's not like produce purchasing is, a grower has to sell to me. It's not a brand and a product that if you don't have it on shelf, I always use all, all gold tomatoes as an example. If you're not gonna have that on shelf, you can have a customer go to your position because they don't have that specific brand, so you probably have to. So in produce, the supplier has as much bargaining power as we have. And it's a relationship. We've got third and fourth generation growers supplying into the business. I've got as much interest in a producer staying on a farm, being able to farm and have prosperity as he has in my business doing well, growing share, expanding, having capital to add more stores as his business partner. So, you know, it's, to say it, it's definitely not a one-sided relationship and not a one-sided event. It's for the better of our business partner and a grower and for the better of the business partner in his customer, which is then us.
Right, so, I mean, if I understand you, what you're saying is it's critical for a farmer from, and we're talking from a farmer's perspective here, to have alternative places where he can sell his goods?
Yeah, I don't think that formal retail is so big that they can only service us in any way. Formal retail is, let's say, asparagus formal retail will accept sells ninety percent of what gets sold in South Africa, but when it comes to a commodity like potatoes, Shoprite Group purchase five percent of the potatoes being produced in South Africa. And we are the biggest buyer of potatoes in South Africa. All the formal retail left you've had here buys thirteen percent of the potatoes that gets produced in South Africa. So no grower can only sell to us. If you sell to other retailer, great, he's gonna get that percentage up, but he'll have to sell, export probably a bit of a portion, have to sell to municipal markets, have to sell to independent traders. Have to trade on electronic platforms to sell his crop.
And in your view, the impact of having those sort of alternative supplies? I mean, that, does that sort of discipline the retailers? Does that benefit the farmer? I mean, what is your sort of take?
All of that helps with the price discovery, the right price at that given time. Taking, we're working with a living product. It's dying, so it needs a bit of urgency and speed in how you handle it as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fonseca. Chair, I'm covered.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Murray. And maybe, I know that you started with this, I heard you earlier talking about this, just to understand this market segmentation, right? So that we understand this very well, right? How do you, how would you segment the market for fresh produce and the players? I think you did touch a bit on this. Just want to see if you want to expand a bit on that so that we understand exactly which, which levels should we be assessing?
The market in my mind is divided in three and that's how Shoprite has situated itself. There's an upper LSM component where, as I mentioned previously, I think Wurz, two large, obviously Wurz and some Peconpay, some spa stores depend on where they are situated and how that stores manage or competing. There's a, with the biggest ranges and the best quality produce in our case. And then there's those banners that compete in, for the model income, LSM four to seven households with a bit of a reduced range and won't necessarily have, let's call it, the full, very expensive article, range of articles that will be in your upper LSM stores. And again, that bracket will be some spa stores, some Peconpay stores, some food lover stores. And in the LSM one, two, three banner would be Shoprite Boxer, even independent in the rural South Africa probably, informal traders and street vendors.
So just to confirm then, maybe at the upper level, so we start with the upper level, maybe you can cover all the three, just your understanding of the share of, of formal retail in that, in those categories?
We only have sight of our market share in those three categories and then the rest of the market as a totality. So I would not necessarily have the data to say X amount of Peconpay or X percentage of Peconpay or Food Lover or what isn't which segment. I know in our life, it's, yeah, it's difficult to say.
No, the reason I'm asking is because you have given us the aggregate number in the submission, which talks about formal retail in general, right? So, and your share of.
Of that formal retail, yeah.
Of the formal, so not to, I just want to, to understand whether there are different dynamics at the upper level, the mid-level and the lower, lower level in broad terms.
Yeah, we just see, we just see our business is performing in that banner, I can't see how the rest is doing. But maybe you wanted a bit clearer and we can take it in the private session.
Okay, that's fine, I think we can follow up on that, I just, I just want to, because what, what we need to understand is where, you know, which, which channels are selling the produce that you are referring to, right? And I think you, I don't want to draw these conclusions, but I think it's, at least from your submissions now, it's clear that at least at the upper level, it's very few players, probably maybe the formal retailers, but not all of them, really the top end. And then maybe you then see the lower share of formal retail at the very low LSM, which is where you bring in informal traders and everybody else. Right, I just want to make sure that we understand this correctly. Now, on the, maybe on the, because I think we've noted the program you have for, for the, for the small growers. What has been the retention rate? Do you keep this data maybe at Shoprite? How much, you know, how many, how have you been able to retain these farmers over time?
Between ten and fifteen percent of those growers, I would say annually change around.
So what is?
So whether they stop farming or they not prepared to supply us anymore, supplying somebody else, I can't say, but between ten and fifteen percent is a general turnaround time. So we'll onboard more to cover for that shortfall, but it's, it's not a conscious, I want a hundred SME growers. It's, if I'm in the region, I'll try and get my product from the region just because it's the most affordable way to get product to my shelves and it's part of our day-to-day business and operating, so.
That's okay. Do the farmers that stopped supplying you provide you any reasons why they are stopping?
No, so there's a long list, each case would be its own independent reason. So as I said, it could be that they stopped farming or they're not continuing with.
But do you receive such information?
No, well, the buyer probably at the time will know. But there's also fifty-six of them doing the business around the country, so.
So maybe I think we will, because I just need to establish that fact, right? Because I think you say fifty, twenty percent and the reasons for exit. I think this is something that we just need to know for ourselves, right? So that we don't say again in general terms, you know, whether someone has stopped farming or they're doing something else. But if you are able, if you, if your buyers have such information from a Shoprite perspective, I think that would be very helpful. Right. So I think we, we will, maybe before I just last, ask last question, so we will go through, I think, the closed session, right? So I just want to, to maybe understand one more thing. So in terms of the prices that you, you pay to the farmers, do you compare? You know, how do you, do you have a set, you know, for these smaller growers and a set for, for this?
Our aim is to pay every farmer exactly the same price. So negotiation every week because some grower might want more than his neighbor who has more or less pressure on volume. But our aim is to get to a single price, just making business a bit easier for ourselves as well.
Okay. What is this? So this, I think you have explained very well how difficult it is to set the price. So I just asked and I want you to under, so, so when you say you try strive the same price, what are those parameters? What is the same price to you, in your view, generally?
The same price.
So for tomato, how do you go about this?
On a specific product, I would aim to purchase it at the exact same price next week, fifty-two times of the year. If the industry prices or supply differ, we've got a general agreement. If prices vary by fifteen to twenty percent, we'll renegotiate a price in a week, up or down. Otherwise, to hold the price firm for a week, every week of the year.
Does that work per grade? How does, how do you go about?
So all four hundred and fifty articles, so we'll negotiate a price on a bag of tomatoes, a bucket of tomatoes, a per kilogram product of tomatoes, a cocktail tomato or fancy tomato, each and every product we have will negotiate a price on it.
So you have prices per grade every week?
Yeah, per, per product, yeah. Yeah, so in, there's fourteen different articles in a tomato category for argument, so each and every one of them will have a price. And we would have negotiated the price for that product every week with the growers in six distribution centers, four by distribution center.
Let me, maybe just illustrate this to me, like, just on a pick tomatoes. How does it work with tomatoes? Who's your major supplier of tomatoes?
I probably have to look at it, there's eighteen of them, I think, if I can remember correctly. So you don't necessarily have a major supplier and it's gonna differ per distribution center. I think we gave in the submission, we can look at the submissions. Out in those categories you asked about, we gave our top ten, bottom ten. So the names are there. So it would differ per distribution center just because of the growing areas, so.
So you will have, so just want, so you, in that case, you'd have the same price per grade for all the eighteen?
For that specific article, let's say it's a bag of tomatoes in, so there's eighteen growers around the country. This, we'll have to first look at a distribution center. Let's take Gauteng. So Gauteng will negotiate its price with Gauteng's suppliers for next week. If they've got three or four, five suppliers for a bag of tomatoes, they'll try and negotiate that price to one price, ten rand. But in the Eastern Cape, it's different growers, different market circumstances, different opposition, different cost structure, whatever the case is. Eastern Cape will look at Eastern Cape tomatoes and then negotiate price for their region. So would the Western Cape do, so would the Free State do, so would Gwazalina Tal and Limpabwa. Each and every distribution center negotiates with their pool of growers in their area. So it's not a one price, the same price selling in Messina Shoprite versus Kailser versus Shoprite in the Western Cape. That could be worlds apart, just depends on what supply and demand looks like in the Western Cape on this specific week you're negotiating.
Who says the price at retail? From a Shoprite point of view?
Yeah, so Freshmark does that.
So from individual DCs? So from individual DCs?
So every DC, every buyer for that product category, uh, does the price negotiation and the setting of the retail price on every article, fifty-two weeks of the year.
So how does it work in practice? So would we have different retail prices, say for tomatoes and how thing?
Gouting in checkers will be the same retail price in ShopRite, because it's a different product, uh, with a different requirement would be it's one price, Gouting ShopRite and use safe ShopRite, uh, uh, use safe Gouting is gonna be a different price because their product that they require and the product specifications are a bit different. And then there's parcels of stores we trade with or stores that are um that is on promotion or whatever, that could differ from a retail point of view.
I see. So what's usually the price premium between these uh three categories, low to mid and then?
Yeah, it it, I'm not gonna say a percentage. Um, it's on the week, uh, on the product category, it's gonna differ. There's no mandate on a specific product category from a um purchase and sell price. It's gonna depend on um what promotions are happening out there in the retail industry, what the opposition prices are doing, uh, what your supplier is looking like, because no sense in um selling a product that you're not gonna have enough of and 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 so that uh, there's no one clear, it differs every week, uh, the strategy. And that strategy gets built by a group of buyers and it's the distribution center.
Okay, thank, thank you very much for that. I think I'll 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 follow up that specific question in the confidential session, just so that
No problem.
get a sense of those um uh the premium that you you achieve at different levels and maybe the reasons around that. Um, uh, this, unless, uh, Mr. Bowles, you find Mr. Mara, okay, thank you very much. So this brings us to the end of this session, the public session. Um, we thank you very much, ShopRite, for making the time. Um, we, as I've said when we started, that uh this is the end of the public hearings for the information gathering sessions, so we would still be uh engaging specific stakeholders or even follow up questions uh to you um throughout the course of this month with the hope that we we are able to finalize our provisional report um around May. So we 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 are working towards that. So thank you very much. Uh, so this uh brings us to the end of this proceeding, so we will, we will end here. Thank you very much and I hope this streaming stops and then we move immediately to the next session.